There it is. Rename. Thank you. Oh, spelt my name wrong. When I logged in, it said recording in progress. We probably should not be recording until the meeting starts.
We, we have no John or Mike.
Oh.
Set up the meeting to run as soon as it got, it opened or soon as somebody signed in.
Huh, okay.
And I would explain that a little further in selectmen briefing. I've got seven oh one and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Catherine, why are you so dark there?
Uh, because I'm using my husband's laptop. He has another meeting tonight. So he would have had to have two Zoom meetings on.
This looks like you're sitting in the, in the dark.
I'm not. All the lights are on.
Okay. There you go. Now we see you. You were just an outline before.
A shadowy figure.
A shadowy figure, as Roger said. All members are present here from the public. Any comments for the public? Comments from the public? Okay, first selectmen's briefing, just an update on this meeting. Neither John nor Mike could make this meeting. So we were operating on hosted, which means we, we have been recording from the very beginning, which we normally do anyway. I know it was the request of at least one of us selectmen to go into executive session, which that is going to mean that we cannot do that.
Probably we can. We certainly can.
It is going to be taped. We have no way of not taping.
Then you would shut off the tape. It would be the very last thing on the agenda.
We do not have control of the tape.
You cannot, you cannot stop the tape. Even I can do that in a Zoom meeting.
I, I was told we do, we will not be able to do that.
Well, then I guess, I guess it'll, will be talked about publicly then.
I guess Chris was told that. I wasn't, I didn't talk to, to John directly about that.
Then, as I said, then we're going to have to discuss it publicly.
The alternative to that would be to call an emergency meeting tomorrow morning through teams.
It doesn't qualify as an emergency meeting.
And if I could just finish something here, Catherine. If the board wanted to consider doing it at a team and go into executive session under pending litigation, that would qualify as grounds for a, an executive session.
Only if that pending litigation were like happening in the next week. Okay, that's not, look at what's considered an emergency.
I'm, I'm not sure on that, Catherine, but you could be right. I'd have to talk to counsel. Anyway, that's where we are. I'm going to go on with the rest of the agenda. And if we do want to talk about this other matter, we can certainly talk about it.
Yeah, I'll actually, I will have two things to add to the agenda. And I'll just wait till you're done with what you have.
Okay. As far as the selectmen's briefing, the automated door, ADA door has been installed at the town office building. It's working properly. I got a couple of positive comments from residents who have been utilizing it. I spoke today with the contractor who's doing the installation of the oil tank replacement up at the school. And at this point, everything looks on schedule. They're very optimistic. They're going to be able to take delivery as expected and complete the installation prior to the beginning of the next school year. So we're hopefully that will stay status quo and that seems to be going forward fairly smoothly. That street light, I know we did the Upton Road update last week, but the street light has now been confirmed to be installed and operating on Old Town Road and Route eighty-nine. And I'd just like to take another moment to thank the Ashford Volunteer Fire Department. We had a structure fire on North Road this past Thursday. No injuries. There were some pets that were cut loose and they even helped retrieve some of those and all of those have been returned to the owner. And no injuries in the fire. Unfortunately, the house is uninhabitable. So I tell there's further repairs done. Well, job done on their part and good turnout by the department. That's all I have unless you have any questions about that or any other selectman briefing sort of related items. Hearing none, I'll go to the acceptance of the regular meeting of February sixth of twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any comments, corrections, additions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Special meaning of February eleventh of twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Was that the, at the school I was not present?
Roger is going to abstain because he was not there.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With one abstention. Here from boards, commissions and committees. Here from boards, commissions and committees, seeing none. We will move on. Old business. Status of the Ashford, Ashford School Childcare Program is proposed by the Recreation Commission. We had four potential candidates. One of them has asked that her name be withdrawn. We have two applications in hand. We have one that I'm told is forthcoming. And I have not scheduled any interviews pending, received the three of them, which once upon received, I intend on distributing to the board and setting up the board's pleasure on interviews on that. So other than that, I have no action on that. New business, board and commission appointments. We, I have none that are recommended. We do have a young lady who has requested consideration for an alternate seat on the Recreation Commission. Her name is Diane Wheeler. She presently volunteers quite a bit for the Rec Committee. I talked to Sherry York today, who intends on inviting her to their next meeting and asking for their board to make a recommendation to us. So we'll take no action on that.
The, the person in question, just so you know, is the director for the Salvation Army camp?
I do. We, we received a letter from her with a brief description of a little bit of a background and she.
Yeah, I know you didn't mention it when you mentioned who it was.
Yeah, she's the lodge director and social events manager. Very nice person from where I understand. And I, I'm going to assume that's going to go through, but until we get a letter from the commission, we'll curtail any action on that. Request permission to make use of the Ashford town of Ashford roadways for the motorcycle run benefits to be held on June tenth.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Chris, have we received the appropriate insurance certificates?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Only that they always provide us with what we've asked for and it's a really great event.
Yeah. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're, Catherine, you want to make a motion to add two things to the agenda?
Yes, I do. The first is, I am to add, I make a motion to add discussion of the project management for the Ashford School roof construction.
I'll.
Is there a second? Any more discussion on adding that? All in favor of the motion to add it to the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The floor is yours, Catherine.
Okay. Um, when we during the public hearing and then town meeting, particularly during the public meeting about approval for the five million for the school roof. I was a little surprised that we didn't have more detail behind what we're looking at. But I think the biggest thing was that we heard that there wasn't going to be a professional project manager. And there wasn't going to be a clerk of the works. And it's a five million dollar effort. That's a lot of money and there can be, a lot of things can go wrong. And I, if I understood correctly, Jim Rupert was saying that, you know, he would be kind of overseeing or whatever. He would get the information to the different people within the, the committee. And that Mike Malady would be on site. But Mike Malady and Jim have never managed something as big as this. And I really think that it would be behoove us to make sure we manage the risk by employing a project manager for it. And, and possibly a clerk of the works. If the project manager can manage it, fine. But to have somebody else do that so that it can be professionally managed. I, I realize that Jim, if I understand correctly, he is the acting town manager or something like that in Bolton. Plus he's our building official. And he's the building official in Wellington and in Bolton. I am a little concerned because in terms of a building thing, he would be the official actually vetting the finished product as well. So I, I think nobody thought of that. I don't think he even thought of it. But I think that it would be behoove us to get somebody who is a professional to come, that can man, to manage construction project. So I'd like to talk with the, with this board about doing that. It's a lot of money and if we don't do it right, we're going to have a problem.
Does anybody know with the, with the bonding, whether there's bonding requirements that might require us to have a?
My knowledge of the bond, what I've read of it, there, there's no requirement. But I was a bit surprised at the discussion we had at the town meeting that they did not anticipate hiring one.
I'm glad to hear that because I was very surprised.
I, I I've managed a lot of state projects this size and larger. And always we had a project manager. And, and I appreciate Jim's effort and offering Mike's efforts. And I, I don't expect it. I still expect that they would be hands on as much as possible, but I would be perfectly comfortable for our board to make a recommendation to the building committee, which I understand is going to meet in about a week. And I had a brief discussion with Jim Rupert a few days ago. And their intention is come to find out the roof project in Eels Smith had a project manager.
Good.
And from what I understood from Jim, they are going to invite that project manager to their committee meeting. But I, I would be very comfortable if our board wanted to make a motion and a recommendation of the building committee to to hire a project manager.
I, I will definitely make that motion. And I'll make the motion so we can have further discussion. I move that the Board of Selectmen would recommend, recommend that the the they're really an advisory committee to us. So it's a little hard to say recommend to them. I recommend that a project manager be hired to oversee the five million dollar school roof project.
Is there a second?
I, I concur. I'll, I'll make a second.
We have motion on the floor that's been seconded.
Any discussion, guys?
No, other than I, for all the things that have already been said and everything, I, I just think it's prudent. This amount of money, this important, as important because don't forget, there are a lot of other things that we're going to be looking at at the school while we're doing that.
Right.
I, I know I would be much more comfortable when we constructed this building and did the renovations to the library. We also had a project manager. In fact, his name is on the plaque in the foyer. And I just always think to have a professional, it's I know they come expensive, but I, I believe there, you get good value.
I think it would be money, money well spent as a a many-year project manager. I can appreciate what that kind of an effort is. And in reality, at a minimum, the first, the project manager should be there for essentially six months. Two months planning and it's detailed planning, which we haven't seen. And also, and then the construction phase, which is two months. And then two months for any cleanup items, whatever is left.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure on the timelines, but for whatever it would take, I think we need a I, I'm supportive of making a recommendation that they go ahead and, and advertise. Once they get their plans and everything in order.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. The other, the other thing too, is that this is no reflection on that group or on Jim. This is, you know, we very much appreciate everything that's gone into this. The effort that's been made has been made over multiple years. But we also don't want to burn people out completely. And we certainly don't want to have them, you know, kind of scattered in terms of our resources to manage it.
No, and it, it goes on said that, you know, we started looking at this in, I believe, two thousand fifteen originally, I'm going back in the paperwork. And looking at cost projections at that time, it was two million dollars. We're now at five and, and who knows what may be presenting itself. And I, I just think that that even adds to the importance of having a professional onsite to oversee work and even look at unanticipated work that we unfortunately may run into. So any more discussion? Hearing a call for vote, all in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. The other thing that I want to add to the agenda is a concern about the Ashford Citizen and recent submission. So I'm trying to think of a way to word the motion, but I'd like to move that we discuss as a board, the the types of articles that are to be included in the Ashford Citizen that both traditionally and certainly historically. And what is already written up about what that citizen is for.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. So as we three selectmen know, there, there was a submission to the citizen not in keeping with what the citizen has produced in the past. And I'd like to read what the purpose of the citizen is. The purpose of the citizen, and this is on the very first page, the title page of the citizen every month since its inception, nineteen fifty-two. Of the citizen every month since its inception, nineteen fifty-two. The purpose of the Ashford Citizen is to keep Ashford citizens informed on what is going on in town. Um, further inside on page two, and I believe it's always on page two. Um, there are, uh. Let's see. The citizen reserves the right to reject any submissions. Readers should be aware that opinions or articles by individual writers, organizations are not necessarily those of the citizen. And it will not print items regardless as offensive or slanderous. In addition, uh, it has something about political barriers, can't do that, can't. Uh, basically lobby using the citizen. And when we look through the citizen, what we see is information. We see, uh, for churches, we see what their hours are and if they have any special events. Uh, we have that for pretty much all of. The different groups, you know, if it's a political thing, it's only about what the event is and the hours. And who to contact. Uh, other things are informational about what's going on in town, different kinds of things like, um. Uh, wine tasting at the church farm. Something, you know, things that the assessor puts out for information that's valuable to our community. Uh, and our tax collector. And, um, again, we are not, uh. It's not a vehicle, since it's paid for with taxpayer dollars. It's not a vehicle for proselytizing for any group. So I'll give you an example. If the Proud Boys wanted to, uh, uh, invite people to join their group. I think it's unlikely we would post that in the citizen. If the Ku Klux Klan was going to have a rally. And they were inviting people to come. I'm not sure that we would post that in there either. When churches pro, are proselytize, and we haven't had this happen before. When church proselytizes, they're doing kind of a, uh, it's like a come to Jesus moment. And that's not part of what we put out in the citizen either. And if you look back historically at pretty much every one of them. You would not find that in there. So, um, I just want to make sure that we as a select, select Board of Selectmen have discussed this. Before this next issue is printed.
Roger, any comments?
Well, I mean. Unfortunately, you know, at this point, we used to have a committee. They used to sit there and, and write articles and, and, and work the articles and what have you and. Unfortunately, in this day, you know, volunteerism is, is kind of obsolete. Uh, unfortunately, it does fall on one person and, and thanks, thank that person steps up and. And the Ashford Citizen that all can enjoy. And I talk to people all the time and they're very happy with, with what the citizen is and what the citizen is about. Um, so. I mean, I, you know, I, I kind of, I, I not kind of, I, I agree with Catherine, it's just that, uh. We need to protect our resource and, and. And, uh, you know, keep it doing what it has historically and consistently done.
It's, it is a news, it is a newsletter. What is it, it's a? Basically, it's about news. And I also wanted to add that, you know, I have known and worked with Sherry for. I don't know, as long as you've been there. And she does this on a volunteer basis, she does an outstanding job. I happen to know that she often works weekends and whatever to try and get it to all come together. And she has been very prudent and judicial about what goes in the citizen. I know I have submitted things in the past as for selectmen or whatever, where she took a look and went, you know. That one's a little off and it was a very good point and I fixed what I had. So, uh, I just am concerned about the quality. And the intent of the Ashford Citizen, it's not to proselytize.
Uh, just to make a few comments, I, I also very much appreciate Sherry's work and have expressed that to her on a number of occasions. And, um, I do wish that we could attract some, uh, volunteers to give her a hand on that. I think the burden on one person's shoulders sometimes is. Is just too much, uh, but she does an excellent job of that, and I think that publication is something that we've all been. Proud of and supported with the, uh, every time we go to budget to support in the Board of Finance. Securing town funds to help keep that going. Um, I was. Faced with a, a question that I originally was brought up last month regarding a letter that was submitted. Um. And authorized the saying, uh, letting that go in the paper. Uh, worked with town council on it, who advised that they did not feel it was proselytizing, but more of a letter of introduction. Um.
There was a letter of introduction in the January newsletter.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
Yep.
And I permit, I permitted that one. Subsequent to that, we received the second one. And that's the letter that's in question right now. And when I was asked to make a final decision last Friday by Sherry. I did write a, an email to her at her request. Um, and I believe the quote was in there to protect her. Um, and I said to go ahead and print it. I had not had a conversation with town council at that time. Him and I had played photog most of the day. I did have a conversation with him at the end of the day about five thirty. And he said that it was my call. Um, he had not had a chance to review. The proponents' attorney's letter that had been cited with several cases. But since then, having realized the passion that. I know our board has regarding this and Sherry's passionate about. My intention is to write an email tomorrow to rescind that authorization to put that letter in. Uh, and inform Sherry of that fact.
Bill, I very much, Bill, I very much appreciate that.
I, I will advise, um, the pastor on what our finding is and what our feelings are. Um, I have informed him that we have no problem with him. Advertising, uh, services, times of services, special events he may have. But that this particular letter was kind of on the line. And it drawn up more passion than we need regarding our simple town paper. Uh, that we get out there, so my intention tomorrow is to do an email to our. Town clerk and editor of the citizen withdrawing my instructions to allow that letter.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, I think it would set a dangerous precedent.
Well, I, the, the only bad part about this. Conversation, I know you were trying to make a point, but. You know, is to include this discussion with names of the Ku Klux Klan and Proud Boys. You know, the people that we're talking about here are nowhere near.
No, no.
What, what we're talking.
No, that's just to make the point that. But, you know, if we were to go ahead with something like this, they would also be able to say First Amendment.
Uh, un, understood, but.
That's, uh, to give you an extreme example, that's all.
That's, that's my intention and, uh, I hope that that satisfies everybody and I will inform town council of that fact also in the morning.
Now, the other thing, Bill, is I don't know that town council really knows what's in our citizen and what's been in the citizen, so I don't know if he's taken a look at it. To see the nature of the, of the publication.
He's been sent copies and I don't believe we have. Januaries on the webpage yet, is that right, Sherry?
I haven't received it yet from anything printed, um, they are. Difficult sometimes to, um, get the, the PDFs from.
Yes, they're under relatively new, new ownership.
Yeah, again, I want to echo, you know, with that, in no way do we, you know, compare, it was just. Once we open up the door, we head down a slippery slope and that's the extreme of what we could encounter and in no way. Are we referring that we have any.
And no, I don't, and I don't think churches relate to Ku Klux Klan or the other.
Oh, no.
I'm just trying to make us an extreme example to give a point of what we could end up facing.
Absolutely. If we open the door and head down a slippery slope.
Yeah, and I think we've found that our churches have been able to get their messages out as to their activities and, um, special groups and. Uh, special times, uh, and, uh, greetings to the, to the public. Without having to go into the kind of thing we saw.
Now, since we're talking about this citizen, I, I just want to bring up one other thing quickly, Sherry and I talked about this. Probably over six months ago, um. And I certainly don't mind that the Board of Selectmen would help with this, but. What I'd like to do is get together with Sherry, go over our existing rates that we're charging. Some limitations on, on volume. Um, as Sherry pointed out in a, an earlier email to me, you know, we're only allowed thirty-two pages at maximum. And quite honestly, there's are some of our groups that are pressing us on that. I know Sherry does everything she can to accommodate them. But I, I think probably writing down some specifics about what's allowed and not allowed. Uh, would go a long way to help as well as revisiting some of the rates we have. I know I've had a couple of local social type groups in town. That are having a real problem with getting membership. But frankly, paying for ads in the citizen, and I think that's one of the things that we ought to look, look at and see if we want to. Make some exceptions and accommodate somebody along those lines, but.
I like that idea.
Unless there's objections, Sherry and I can try to come up with some recommendations. Um, and then bring them to the board for consideration, I think, I think that'd be beneficial to everybody.
Yeah, and, you know, Sherry's, Sherry's judgment and her management of this has been stellar. I have, I have actually witnessed her trying to put it together with everything people send. And how careful she is looking at each of the articles to make sure that, you know, their typing's right, that they. You know, that what they're putting out for their message is clear, that kind of thing. So, you know, through her efforts, this has, has remained and has become an even better document than it used to be. So I have, I have a lot of respect, I have a lot of respect for her expertise in this.
I couldn't agree with that more. Any more discussion?
Nope.
All right, we will move on to items for next agenda, um. I want to start talking about the budget, I believe we've got all the information we need on our, um. C N R committee that will be having a meeting. Um, Paul Varg is representing the finance, the, um, excuse me, not the finance committee, but the fire department. And Cindy Ford are representing the school on that committee and they're both out of town, so. I'm going to be having, I don't anticipate we're going to need more than one or two of those committee meetings. Um, but I'll probably be calling them either at the end of the month or the first week in March, uh, to finalize that. And, um, we're, we're going into some revisions that our new treasurer is recommending. Um, regarding the budgets, so we're running a bit behind. But, um, as I get more information, I'll certainly inform the board on, on where we are. Um, I'm thinking we may ask for a little extension, I notice there's a, an open week with the Board of Finance. Um, between the week that Board of Ed is presenting their budget. And then they start considering all the budgets, so. Um, I'll keep you folks informed on where we are on those timelines. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything else. Catherine, anything else for next week's agenda?
No, thank you, uh, motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
I've got seven thirty-three.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, folks, have a good night.